Good evening, everyone. We're now ready to begin our special call meeting. It is Monday, June the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at six P. M. I'd like to welcome all that's here at this time. Let us stand for our implication and our pledge of allegiance. I asked our chief, L. Rock, would you lead us in prayer?
Sure. But over things that was the opportunity to see today, Lord, thank you for his pleasure to be stood upon each of us. Well, thank you for the opportunity for us to come together, Lord, and do business of the city.
Yes.
I pray for each of these electric officials, boarders. They make decisions on the city's behalf, or the duties give them the wisdom they need to make the correct decisions. And Lord, just bless this evening we have together. In the name I pray.
Amen.
In half our good allegiance, our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic that we sustain, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just again want to reiterate, I thank you all for being here and sharing with us on this day. Um, I want to inform the public that we hadn't had our first meeting this month because we were having back-to-back meetings with the budget. Um, so we forego the first meeting of the month, and we're required by law to have at least one meeting each month. So we having a meeting now, and we'll be having one on the twenty-third also as far as a public hearing. Um, I just want to inform the public because it's a lot of innuendos and things are being said about we trying to hide or whatever it may be. That's not the case. We've just been meeting a lot with the budget, and the budget sessions were open to the public. Um, we didn't have them online, but they were open to the public. I want to thank our council for being here. I want to thank, um, Councilman Rivers in his absence. Uh, he had a vacation due, and he's, he's having a little bit of me time. So I just, uh, wanted to thank all for all they've been doing because they have been working really hard. Um, I wasn't here the last meeting because I got food poisoning, but I heard that, um, one monkey doesn't stop no show, that all they kept going and doing well. And I just want to thank them for doing that. I thank our staff, administrator, uh, clerk, our finance director who's going to come forth and give us an update. Things are really looking good in Pickens. We're moving in a very positive way. It may not seem like it on Facebook, but if you come up here and talk to the people and see what's going on, you will see some great things happening in this little town. And I just think that there's more to come in the near immediate future and in the distant future. That being said, I'd like to go further on because we have no one signed up for comments. We go on to number five.
My fault.
No comments from Sipsons. We didn't have any comments. Ain't nobody signing.
Me change. I have one before you, Jews.
Oh, okay. All right. Yeah, we had it changed though. Online also. Um, so now we have our twenty twenty-three audit forensic review update from our finance director, Ms. Mandy K. Hess.
Um, so as a reminder, we did, um, add fifty thousand to the budget during the work session last week for, uh, forensic audit purposes. Um, to date, the accountant has determined, um, that at least thirty-two thousand of the unallocated expenses should be reclassified to the CWS expenditures, um, from the miscellaneous account where the, the money is sitting or where the expense is sitting at this point. Um, he does feel like there could potentially be a larger amount, uh, due to CWS, uh, but he's finishing up that analysis and will get back to us with that final number. Um, and that is just the utility fund. Once he finishes that fund, then he'll move forward to the general fund. Um, we do believe that there are, um, additional unallocated expenses tied into, uh, a water sewer adjustment, uh, that was posted to the ledger twice. Um, several voided and reissued checks, voided or reissued, that were keyed in incorrectly, uh, meaning some were voided in the software, but not, they actually did clear the bank. Um, so Dana and I went back and did a full review of every check that was cut during that year. Um, we, uh, have made any necessary corrections and have forwarded that information along to the accountant. So once he moves into the general fund account, he will review that and confirm those numbers. Um, this has been extremely tedious and time-consuming. Um, so David and I both thank everyone for being patient with us. Um, he does feel like we, uh, will be able to identify all of the unallocated expenses, and we have found about half of it to date. Um, additionally, we had a hair software specialist in the office today for training purposes and doing cleanup on, uh, a lot of the stuff that goes back to twenty fifteen. Um, a lot of the unreconciled stuff that's just been sitting out there. So we are making progress.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, if I may, um, I'd like to seriously commend Ms. Hess and Daniel Epps of her staff, David McAllister, uh, the accountant who's been working with us. Uh, everybody has to remember that, first of all, we have added to the budget fifty thousand dollars in the event that we do need additional forensic accounting. It is my hope that we won't need those funds, but they are, council has made them available if we need to chase this further. But, uh, as Hess and, uh, Ms. Epps have spent hours and hours coming through, uh, information that, again, we have to remember is from the twenty twenty-three budget year, um, before many of us were involved. So this is, uh, our own little forensic hunt, uh, looking at the past, and, uh, we hope to have it, uh, straight soon so that we can move forward with catching our audits up.
So thank you, Ms. Hess.
Anybody else have any questions?
Good. You may go, sir.
They're after you.
Yes, um, always.
Uh, so exactly, you said about how?
Correct.
So.
Yes.
Were, we were at.
What?
Excuse me.
Get your mic up.
I'm sorry. So can, can you, there's a, can you give us an exact number where we are, where we are at right now?
I can't give you an exact number, but I can tell you we're around eighty, eighty-five that we have identified.
Eighty-five thousand out of hundred and.
Fifty.
Hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty-ish. I don't know that exact number either.
One feature set.
One fifty-seven. Okay. All right. That's good. Good job. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I just had a quick question, Mandy, as well. Um, and, and that was one of my questions. The other one was to ask, and while we're not able to do audits of the additional years, but how are we doing as far as closing out those years just for our own person, our own internal record keeping for the years following twenty twenty-three?
Um, so the twenty-three, twenty-four bank reconciliations will have to be redone, um, probably, um, depending on how much of an adjustment has to be made, um, by the, by the auditor in the end. Um, but yeah, Dana and I'll probably have to go back and redo those. But as far as this year's closeout, um, which will start happening in the next month or two, it, it shouldn't really affect it much.
Okay.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Yeah.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much. Okay. Number six, in consideration of first reading approval of amendment to Pickens City Code, section seven dash three, fire protection service fees. Administrator, give us.
Yes, sir.
Um, so essentially been working with the fire department. Um, as we know, since two thousand thirteen, uh, there's been lots of evolution, uh, within the city fire department and how the county handles fire protection. Uh, since that time, the county has largely taken on the role of taking over, uh, special purpose districts and most municipal fire departments. Uh, the city of Pickens chose not to do that. We have maintained a vigorous, uh, fire department, uh, that serves us well. Uh, and in that intervening period, we have charged of varying amounts, but a flat fee, uh, to each, uh, property. What we have found when we analyze that, especially when we had the most recent review, as we do each year, of how we should approach our future and how to best fund the fire department, their operations, their capital needs. Um, we analyzed what the county is charging for fire protection just outside our boundaries and in the enclaves and donut holes within our community. And we found that there was a wide gulf that we were charging far less than the county was charging for what I would argue their service is a lesser service than ours. Our, uh, ISO ratings are, are better than theirs, and I think will increase through the actions that we're taking or attempting to take today and with this budget, uh, to secure the, uh, sustainability of our fire department well into the future. Um, essentially, this would, uh, in, instead of just taking a flat fee and just raising it, um, we've tried to make sure that we had, are engaging with a more progressive system, uh, that will impact, uh, based on property value, which property is what you're trying to protect, uh, when you are paying a fire charge. So, uh, basically, we hold the minimum at one hundred thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, which has been our rate, uh, for the lowest valued properties so that we don't disproportionately impact those with, uh, lower value properties and perhaps less, uh, income to absorb such fees. And then these prices will raise as the value of the property one owns raise, similar to how, um, ad valorem taxes work. But just to read the introduction here, um, the proposed amendments to section seven-three of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinance, uh, ordinances updates the fire protection services fee structure to improve equity, ensure sufficient funding for the fire protection, and simplify administration. The changes are summarized as follows. Uh, the annual fee requirement is number one. The fire protection services fee will be charged annually to each owner of real property within the city of Pickens for every taxable parcel, including tax-exempt properties subject to a fee in lieu of taxes. That's another addition, uh, that we have not since we began charging these fees, charged nonprofit entities. Um, those could be churches, those could be nonprofit organizations. Um, Blue Ridge Electric Cooperative is a utility that would be included in that who have never paid a fire fee. Um, but all of these category, uh, properties have significant property interests, uh, that depend on fire protection. And while they are exempt from ad valorem taxes, they are not exempt from fire. So we will begin charging them, uh, in the coming year if this were to be approved. Um, so billing and fund allocation, the fire fee will appear as a separate line item on property tax or fee in lieu tax bills. All collected fees will be placed in a designated fund within the city's general fund and used exclusively for operational and capital needs of the Pickens Fire Department. That's a very important, there are very few, uh, fees that we institute that we include that sort of limitation because this is such a central public safety mission, uh, of a city. The, the basics are, uh, police, fire, health, and safety, uh, that we need to provide our citizens. Uh, the fee schedule and calculation, the fee amounts are based on the property type and the assessed value. Key components include a minimum fee of one hundred thirty-one dollars, twenty-five cents for all properties regardless of value. Multi-family units will be charged a base fee of one hundred thirty-one dollars, twenty-five cents for the first one to three units, and seventy-five dollars for each additional unit beyond three. The value-based calculation, um, the fee, uh, equals the assessed value times three point two five percent. Assessment ratios vary, four percent for owner-occupied, uh, residential property and six percent depending on property classification, either commercial or residential. Example, a two hundred thousand dollar residential parcel at the four percent assessment ratio, that assessed value equals eight thousand dollars value. The eight thousand dollars times the three point two five percent equals a fee of two hundred and sixty dollars. Two hundred, uh, two hundred thousand dollar commercial parcel times the six percent assessment equals twelve thousand dollars assessed value.
Excuse me. Yes. Oh, could you, the opponents? Yes. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So the two hundred thousand dollar commercial parcel times the six percent assessment ratio equals twelve thousand dollars assessed value, and the twelve thousand dollars times three point two five percent equals a fee of three hundred and ninety dollars annually. The evaluation of vacant land and improved property, vacant land valued at one thousand dollars per acre for fee calculation, and tax-exempt property would be valued at one hundred dollars per square foot of interior first floor space for the envelope of the building. Uh, three thousand square foot envelope, uh, times the one hundred dollars va, value would be three hundred thousand dollars, times the six percent assessment. Again, that's eighteen thousand dollars assessed value, and the fee would be five hundred and eighty-five dollars per year. The updated ordinance ensures all properties contribute fairly to the essential service of fire protection, supporting readiness and responsiveness across the city, and also serves to properly shift the burden from ad valorem taxpayers to a fee for service. Um, and then council, your packet also includes, as we reviewed, um, last week, uh, many examples across the value scale, uh, showing the impact or lack thereof, uh, based on the value of the property, uh, for these proposed new fees. And this evening, our capable fire chief and his command staff are here to answer any questions you might have. So I open the floor to keep them.
Just come up to the mic, please, so, so people can hear you out in TV land. Just to get started, you've been working very closely with the administrator with this, and I want to commend you. I saw five-year plan that you got together. That's really good. Could you please just give us a synopsis of your feelings about moving forward with the finer fees and, and in the future for the, uh, fire department?
Yes, sir. First of all, I'd like to introduce for those that don't know Jeff Howard, our assistant chief, and Tyler Whitcomb, um, for the firefighter with us that are on duty today. Um, but yes, we've known for quite some time that the, uh, the flat fee that we've been charging for the past eleven tax years, it's not going to sustain the fire department. Um, a system such as this has that ability to sustain the future of this fire department. And that's now our number one goal is that once we implement this, that we never have to come back to this and review it again because we've established a system that will continue to move forward. And as the city grows and the needs of the fire department grows, this will be reflective of the same. Um, I feel like when we worked the numbers, they almost fell into place. Um, with the, the three point two five percent is our starting position, the, uh, minimum of the one hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents that we would be charging this year, that would cover, uh, on a four percent assessment. So if your home is valued at one hundred thousand dollars and it's a four percent assessed, then, uh, they'll see no difference than they saw this past year. They will see no increase whatsoever. Um, when it comes to the fireside, we know that our commercial property is our, uh, most taxing, no pun intended with that, but it is, uh, would take the most resources. Uh, that's the reason we needed an aerial truck was not because of the residential homes, but because of the commercial property. And this schedule that we've, um, outlined brings that into relation with the, uh, the commercial properties paying a more justifiable fee for the services that they need and not putting the entire burden on the residents.
And just to echo what, because the chief and I really have crunched a lot of numbers on this, but it's amazing the difference between a flat fee and it kind of like it was heaven sent because when we started trying to figure out, the numbers just did fall in place. But once you tie this to the percentage of assessed value, as there are new properties that come online, as there are reassessments, as the economy grows and improves, the fire department would now be able to participate in that as a segment of our city. Uh, so there's a, a, a resiliency that this introduces, um, that I think is just wonderful.
Counsel, does anyone have any questions for the chief and administrator?
To none. Can we, I think, Mr. Mayor, so like.
Yes, sir, please.
Thank you.
Just a couple of questions.
Mm-hmm.
To start with.
Yes, sir.
Just, to start with, yeah, just a couple. Um, so do we actually have any properties that are, that are, um, taxed at the ten point five percent assessment ratio?
We do not, and that is, um, we had made every effort to remove every reference to ten and a half percent property if there is any in there.
I mean, could we, could we potentially in the future have, whether there's typically, what, what properties would there typically?
Those are typically industrial.
And is that, is that un, unlikely? Do we, we not have any industrial properties now?
We've discussed it, and we could leave ten and a half percent in there. It's rare, and it's even rare for industrial property because very often they end up being, um, the recipients of a fee in lieu of taxes agreement. So the class of people who are actually paying ten, ten and a half percent in the state is fairly small. Um, but we could include it in there in, in the event that we did.
I mean, is it a no harm, no foul kind of thing?
Yeah. I think we should leave it in there just in case.
Yeah, I think you should.
I mean, our, our zoning ordinance has a, an industrial classification.
It does not. But that's easy enough to amend. We just add a comment, add the ten and a half percent and put another example.
Well, and the ten and a half percent is, is in there.
I'm, I'm actually a little bit confused because the ordinance that I had on the desk when I walked in is not the same as this that Tim read. So what are?
This, this is a memo.
Okay, since in the ordinance, I don't see a reference for the ten and a half.
Um, it was.
Oh, yes, I do. Just kidding. Sorry. Okay.
Um, and that, that was written by Daniel, and I think that basically we had, we had excised ten and a half. This is still first reading, but we can leave it in.
Okay.
I just didn't address it in the.
Especially when you talk about the future.
Yeah, I'd rather have it in.
Just in.
In my opinion, just in case.
Yeah.
Because you never know. With this good fire department we have, we have some businesses might come in and, and we'll want to be part of this.
So Dan, Daniel did write this, this ordinance?
But.
Reviewed this?
Yes.
Okay, good. I was just gonna. Um, it's, I was only my first question.
I took care of it.
Yeah, you did.
Um, back, back, back to you, Tim. Um, the, um, in the ordinance, it mentions specifically that the fee shall appear on a separate line item on each ad valorem property tax bill. Now, we've, we've worked hard to include nonprofit facilities in this ordinance, but yet I don't see where they're getting a tax bill. So how are they getting billed?
That's an outstanding question that Ms. Hess and I are working on. They're not getting a tax bill because there's no.
There's no.
Amount due.
Test, right.
Um, we believe until we are, uh, disabused of that notion, that if we generate a report that has a bill, um, for an address, that it would be generated, but we need to run that down.
Is that something we'll have run down before second reading so that we need to amend the ordinance language to cover the potential that you might have to bill somebody separately?
Right. We can, we can do that because the, the desire would be to bill it all in one. Uh, but if we do find that, uh, we, we are actively trying to get that by second reading, we could insert language, and we may want to do that in any regard so that if there becomes a problem in the future with using the county billing system, that we have a backup that says that we can, or in the alternative, we can deliver the tax bill with a separate line item.
But, Mr. Mayor, let me ask the question. If we pass first reading of this and then we amend the language before the second reading, do we have to have two readings on the amendment, on the new minute one?
Yes.
Is that?
The, based on council direction, in fact, the, the first reading, we could make simple edits before the second reading, and you don't even have to amend it. You could, as part of your motion, uh, pass the first reading with various amendments in it, but you could also direct us and we just bring you what you want for second reading.
Okay. Thank you.
Have you speak?
Oh, sorry. Mr. Mayor, I'm, and Councilman McManus, in the, on page two of the ordinance, in section C, seven point, or seven-three, section C, if you see, it says, or if applicable, the fee in lieu of ad valorem property tax bill. So I think, if I'm understanding that correctly, somebody that doesn't currently get a property tax bill will get a bill of a fee in lieu of.
And that was my.
Well, but, but, but that, that.
Language is very specific in state law that it regards to industrial or special purpose districts as opposed to just any, you can't just pointly use that language to apply to anything you want to down the road. That does not work in this situation. So we will need to have specific language about how we bill entities that are not subject to either a assessment percentage ratio or the fee in lieu of. It's, it has to be something that's specific to that.
So like, sir.
And how would it be if enforceable? That we're going to bill them separately? I was gonna ask, did, if, were you able to talk to the county about this at all, about adding into the tax bill or is that?
Yes, we already charged through the tax, our, our flat rate. There's no issue with charging it. It's in the margins. It's on these tax-exempt properties that they really didn't know the best answer. So we're still working on that. We'll have it before second.
Any discussion about that we're wanting X amount of percent that, or we're charging them for fee for?
We, they haven't brought that up, and I believe that that was the initial charge to add anything, which is already added. This just changes the amount.
And the, the enforceability, um, especially if we have to bill them separately, should we add that to the, to the statute? I'm not sure, but what happens in the case of non-payment to an entity that is not getting a tax bill? I mean, how do we enforce that?
I've asked that question of our attorney, and we'll see what he says. Wait, they don't be selling any nonprofit property on the courthouse steps. You can have that. We'll have to see what alternatives we have. And we'll have the attorney here Monday. Um, so if you have those type of questions, I think we can ask him.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Um, yes, it's okay. I'd like to continue with my questions.
I thought you said you're done.
No, but that was just for that moment. I just actually a question for chief, fire, fire chief. Um, is there anything about this ordinance statement concerns you or excites you or a comment about it at all?
I mean, honestly, um, we, we just got the data that we had requested from the county, um, late Friday. Um, they, they sent us some initial data early on, but we quickly identified it was not complete. So now we have a complete list from the county of every parcel in the city. So now we have a complete list from the county of every parcel in the city and what its current, uh, assessment percentage is, its current assessed value. Um, if it's exempt, I have all that data now. So I will be working this week to go through. And, uh, and I can show you by Monday, um, I will have a list of what every single parcel inside the city limits, what their fee will be for this first year, including exempt properties.
Do you have to remember right off the top of your head about how many exempt properties there might be just from?
Cause I have to go through and filter out because we know we can't, um, charge government entities. So I had to remove those from the exempt properties, um, and then just evaluate from there.
That's fine. Thank you.
Well, I think we disbudget, um, that's, that's, that portion of the revenue would generate about $30,000.
Tim, when will this show up?
In the, with the tax bills that would be issued in October.
October, okay.
Mr. Mayor, the, so we were able to clarify that with the county that this will, this fee will show up on the actual tax bill and not on the receipt, correct?
The, um, and you, you and I spoke last night, the county's tax bill has some issues, um, that aren't related to this. The receipts that the county issues are great and they list everything as a line item. The bills, which are controlled by a different constitutional officer in our system of government are subpar. And they have old information on them that has not been removed, including fire district fees, which they're, I don't think anybody's paying a fire district pay anymore. I defy you to print out your tax bill and figure out what your taxes actually are. Now, if you look at your receipt, your receipt tells you in a very direct, orderly way. That is issued by another office at the county, not related to or under the charge of county counsel or the county administrator. That's what you face when you deal with county government. It's taken us three weeks to get the file. It's our parcel data that we are now reconciling. And we have found that lacking as well because there are fee that we've been supposed to be charging, um, has not apparently made it all the way through to some more recent added properties. And by recent, I mean within years, a couple of years. So we continue to grind on that. That's all an administrative challenge. Um, but our intent is to get as, as good a listing on the bill as we can, but it will be on the receipt. Because the receipt is laid out exactly the way we need it to be laid out.
Okay. And on, and this might also be a clerical thing, but on page two of the ordinance, the, beside the commercial property bullet, I believe that 8,000 is supposed to read 12,000. The second, commercial property, $200,000 parcel times 6% equals 12,000 assessed value. And then it has 8,000 there. If we could just get that changed to 12. And I also would prefer to see different wording on page one and item one, if possible. Even if it were to say, I, my suggestion would be city council reviews ordinances annually.
Well, I always say city council has reviewed.
Has, yeah, that would be better, if that would be okay.
We'll do that.
Okay.
And then the bullet item with the was 8,000 instead of 12.
Do you see that?
Six, 12, and then it says eight.
Okay, yes. Cars. We'll get those Schribner's errors fixed and change that first line.
Very good.
I just have one more quick question. I know we, we talked about this before, but I wanted the city to hear this. So that the specific costs that this fire protection fee is intended to cover, and when we collect it, are we going, is the city going to, Mandy perhaps could answer this. Are we going to have an account where we, or a, how, how are we going to collect these fees and make sure they're being spent on the fire?
We operate largely out of one account.
Okay.
With very little exception. But accounting wise, uh, we will know what amounts are due the, uh, fire department. That is no different than anything else that we do. Uh, that will be kept by, uh, department and division accounting codes. Uh, and their total will be unknown total based on collections.
Okay. So this will go into general fund?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, this council, you finished for?
Yes.
Just for the moment. Okay.
Just for.
This might be my last question. I'm not sure, but, um, I think what Councilman Rogers was alluding to earlier, and I'm going to follow up with that, is that when, when the, when these fees are collected or charged, they're collected with the tax bill. When do we actually get that money in our account?
That is a cash flow consideration and the bills are generally due, they're due in January. But then there are delinquent taxes and there are delays and we get them monthly as the revenue comes in. And we factor all of this on a 97% collection rate because some of them never get paid. One thing that hasn't been mentioned and I neglected to put it in the memo is that, remember that we started this and, and for the city residents to know, our fire department is a little over a million dollar a year operation. That doesn't include buying a boot or a fireproof helmet or a scuba tank or a, um, fire truck. That's just employees and electricity and, and just running the store. The fee that we've been charging, it's a million dollar operation. The fee has been collecting $200,000. So that has disproportionately, uh, put the burden on the, the general taxpayer instead of specific fees per sheriffs. And so I added a point, but did I answer your question?
Well, so the, the, so the, we're basically getting those funds as they're collected at the county level. Monthly.
Right.
So if somebody pays their tax bill immediately with the fee, then it comes in early. And if somebody pays at the last second, then we get it later.
That's yet another opportunity to, to plug our good financial management that we have here in Pickens and our strong financial position. There are many communities who can only pay for a paperclip when some money comes in to pay for a paperclip. There are many communities that annually float tax anticipation notes because they have no money in the bank and they can't pay their bills without borrowing it upfront and paying it back when they get the taxes. We have healthy reserves. We have rainy day funds. We have a reserve for our general fund and our utilities. Based on the way our finances operate now and the fund balances that we have, it is not a concern that it takes somebody till March to pay their bill. We will be able to meet our needs because of our financial strength.
And, and let me just say that I, and, and for all of Pickens residents, I, I don't question that we can't do that, but I just want to be clear about how it works. And, um, I think most people would like to just be clear about how the process works because I don't think there's a necessarily a problem with the process. It's just understanding it.
So that, that would mean though, that we're going to start the new budget year in July 1st and it could be next March, probably at least January to February before we start having any money for the fire department general fund.
It, it will be within the same budget year.
Right.
In this exercise that we're doing.
Right.
If it's in, it's in, July 1 to June 3.
And let me just point out that we're already collecting a fire fee. It's just we're collecting a different fire fee going forward. So it, it falls under the same kind of collection schedule as we have now.
Correct.
So.
Any more questions for chief? So he can sit down.
Thank you.
Chief, I did one more question. What kind of shoes do you wear when you have to stand all day? Do you have special shoes?
No, you're used to it.
Okay. Thank you, chief.
Thank you so much, chief.
I could not.
No.
On our agenda, it says consideration for first reading of approval of the amendment to the Pickens City Code. I want you to consider this. What do you want to do as a council?
I feel good about, I, I mean, I would like to make a motion that we.
Is everybody in agreement? Did we vote, uh, on, on first reading?
Mr. Mayor, I think the process is that, um, someone makes a motion and then it's either seconded or it's not. Um, and if it is seconded, then we will vote on it. And, and I'm, and I have an opinion until the motion is made.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we consider a first reading of, um, an ordinance to amend Article 1 of Chapter 7, Fire Prevention and Protection of the City of Pickens Code of Ordinances. My motion is consistent on getting the information that we just discussed regarding the first line, the change to the 12,000 and also more clarification for the, um, how the non-taxpaying buildings will be exempt. The exempt properties will be billed, but I would like to make a motion that we consider a first reading on this ordinance.
I second.
It's been promptly moved in second. Now we're ready for question. Any comment? All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you so much.
Thank you, counsel.
Now we're ready for a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law, Section 30 dash 4 dash 70A1, for the purpose of discussing the employment, appointment, compensation, promotion, demotion, discipline, or release of an employee, specifically matters relating to the contract renewal and employment of the city administrator. I'd like to bring a point out about the motion. Uh, as far as contract renewal, that's not our job. It's the new council coming on to have it every two years. When the new council is elected, then you renew the contract for the administrator, for, um, our city clerk, um, and the attorney. That's done by the new council in January. So that being said, I would like to take that new contract, new renewal off the table because it has to be done by the new council. Now, what we can do as a council is other things that we want to discuss that it will just pertain to this year going up to January and then, then it will carry over if, if he's reinstated, is if, if his contract is renewed then.
It's just time for comments. Mr. Mayor, it was my, it was my understanding that this executive session would be more of a how we're doing so far kind of a thing with the city administrator versus an actual contract issue. I think, I don't know if some others had may have said differently, but my thought was this was more of a, just a periodic review, um, that had nothing to do with the contract. But that was just how I was seeing it. So.
But I just wanted to make sure because it's written down here.
That, that language, that language is more the, the FOI boilerplate. So take it as a menu that you can take anything.
Well, absolutely. Yes, understood. Yes.
All right. Could I have a motion that we enter in the executive session?
Make a motion, we enter executive session.
And second.
I second that motion.
It's been promptly moved in second. Are you ready for question? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Please excuse us and we will be back with you. All right, we're ready to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we reconvene into regular session.
We have a motion in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are now reconvene. We just got through our executive session, talking about your team. They had a lot to say, a lot to say. You gave us a lot of subject matter. But we were really talking about your performance and everybody on council is pleased with your performance. And we thank you for all that you've done up until this point. So at this time, I'm going to entertain a, a motion as we move forward.
Mr. Mayor, in light of this discussion that we had in executive session concerning city administrator O'Bryant, um, it was discussed, obviously, um, where we started with Mr. O'Bryant, his existing contract and provisions thereof. It was noted in the contract that the other, section 13, other terms and conditions of employment, the council in consultation with employees shall fix any such other terms and conditions of employment as it may from time to time determined relating to the performance of the employee. It is my motion that Mr. O'Bryant has performed, and while I haven't, my experience with Mr. O'Bryant has only been for about seven months. I've seen a, a lot of effort, a lot of work and, and application of a tremendous amount of knowledge that he's brought to the position here. And based on the horror stories that I've heard from previous administrators, administrator, whichever, um, the difference is night and day. And so, um, I move that for these next budget year, we admit, we, we establish a pay in our budget that will increase, um, Mr. O'Bryant's base pay, uh, 10% over and above whatever the coal might be.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
Then promptly moved in second. All in favor, raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Thank you all, counsel, for working with us.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
No, sir. Yes, sir. Yeah, go ahead.
Please don't say you were disappointed.
Take it back now.
Don't say you were disappointed.
I just want to say that it's been, um, and continues to be my pleasure to serve this community and this council. And I appreciate your vote of confidence this evening and I will endeavor to continue to, to, um, that, uh, that respect and, and, uh, positive accolades. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Now I'd like to entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn. Is that what you were gonna ask?
Yes, I'm glad you did it.
Second.
Got a second? All in favor? We are adjourned. Have a great evening.